All right, let's get started, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna be going out of the normal business agenda because we have a speaker here. And you can have the floor, okay?
Cassandra Holmes, she worked on the forester grant and she's gonna give everybody an overview.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so, I feel like is this small enough, is this okay if I just chill here?
Yeah, for sure.
Cool.
We're chill.
That's cool. So Inflation Reduction Act, uh, they have a bunch of grants going around. They started like last year with the federal round of grants for forestry for communities that are underserved or disadvantaged environmentally. Um, so, uh, I applied with Newport last year and we got them a good-sized grant to do a bunch of tree planting on the west side of their city where they have like basically no trees um, that qualified for this grant. And so now we're on the state round of funds through Kentucky. And I just really think it would be great if these smaller communities like Bromley and I'm from Ludlow, so I'm obviously biased and really, really, really wish Ludlow was doing this and had taken me up on it and had somebody like Gail who was answering questions and pushing things forward. Um, but, so, we went ahead and drafted a grant for you guys that would basically give you the beginnings of an urban forestry program. We would, uh, like the inventory would be included. Hopefully a base level of maintenance would be included. It's all in planned into the grant. So, I guess this, what I'm saying is this is what I would want to do in Ludlow or any other small community if I had to like basically start a program. I don't know how much you guys had a chance to look at the grant proposal I put together. Do you want me to go through the individual line items of what we're thinking? Or did you guys just wanna hop straight into questions?
Well, I think that he gave us an overview. This grant, is this a, uh, grant, is it free or the city has to?
Great question. So because Bromley is like basically 100% within this environmental justice zone, um, and you can take a look at it on, I think the grant has like a little map picture on there. Um, it would not require any match from the city. So if it was awarded, it would just be like, here is your money to do the project. And the only like, as far as I know, like, so the downside, I suppose, is like if your guys' budget was really, really tight, we might have to work with them, like with whoever like in, for Newport, for example, the Arbor Day administration, Arbor Day Foundation is administering the grant. And if the budget was too tight, that say like, we decided to, okay, do the maintenance portion of the grant and that's gonna be $20,000. And you guys don't have $20,000 to just shell out to some contractor. It'll just come out of your fund and then their goal, at least again, this is like with the federal grant and I'm assuming it's gonna be really similar with the state grant, is like a two-week turnaround to reimburse for the money and then give it payback, I guess.
Okay, so we, if we apply for this grant, we get it, okay?
Yeah.
They give us a set amount of fee? Is that what it is? They give us a dollar amount to work with?
Yes, usually, yes.
The only thing at this point though, that we can potentially do is our inventory of trees that we currently have and also draft an ordinance that will help protect the trees that we have in place. It would set guidelines before a tree could be removed. According to her study, because we only have roughly two feet between the sidewalk and curb, we cannot plant trees between there. So if when we start doing the sidewalk program, if we could figure out how to expand the area between the sidewalk and curb, then we could potentially start planting between the trees, between the sidewalks.
Yeah, and I didn't do like, I didn't walk every single street in Bromley. So I'm not saying there are no places for planting and that's why a planting plan is included and a maintenance plan is included because I wanna follow, like, once we know for sure what's out there, I wanna follow up and like do the things.
Well, with the sidewalk and curb, uh, program, we could put slab work in there and go with box trees. Are those covered?
Um, I'm sorry.
Park Hills did that, they put the boxes and then the trees.
Oh, like a, like a tree well, sure, yeah. That would totally be like, like if we could, like, so, the challenge with the grant is that the grant will not cover like any concrete or sidewalk work.
It's only gonna cover the trees.
It's only like anything related to the trees. So like, if we had a place in Bromley that say like, like in Newport, what we're doing, like they have like 10 feet wide sidewalks in some areas. So we can do stuff like take concrete out, but in the areas where like the sidewalk is crumbling and we're really gonna need to do some repairs to like finish the job, we can't do any of that with the grant money. So if you guys were going to do like sidewalk work anyway and that was in your budget and we could move the sidewalk over and create space, like, that would be really, really cool.
Something we could do.
And that could be something we could also like add to the grant to say like if you guys knew that you had the funds there, say, hey, the city is committing to doing a little bit of concrete work to make sure that we do have the space for some of these trees.
Well, I'm preparing my 24-25 budget and I think I should be able to include that in there. I also like the fact that the arborist for two years.
Yeah.
But we've never had an arborist.
Yeah, and I, I just think that's really important to help, you know, make the whole thing happen. Cause I don't wanna just hand you all a plan and be like, and good luck, like. You really need somebody who, yeah.
On hand for two years to be a enrollment.
So, uh, will you be doing these studies?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay.
And then after the two years, are we like left, are we on our own then as far as maintaining and?
Uh, yes, so there's a possibility that there would be other grants coming up, for sure. Um, but then I guess it would be up to you guys to decide how involved you wanna stay. If that's something you wanna, like, okay, we can only have an urban forester whenever we have grant funds, have an urban forester, we can only, you know, like, ultimately that'll, I guess that'll be a next step question, I guess.
Yeah, and I was thinking more in terms of like your tree wells and stuff, keeping those maintained and keeping it up, keeping them up. That's what I, where I was going with that one.
Okay, well, um.
Do you wanna add the possibility of the, um, potentially getting the wells into our grant? Do you wanna do that?
I think if we're pretty sure that it could happen, then I think we should include it in, like, sort of like the partnership area, just say that the city is willing to partner and like do this thing to create some space. I think that would like boost.
Take the cut down now.
You know, boost our.
Chances.
Yeah.
So you wanna update that and send me the updated one?
For sure, for sure. And if there's anything else, like, there's a lot of stuff that, I mean, I don't, I'm not from Bromley, I don't know Bromley history, so I don't know if I got 100% of it right. So if there's anything in there that you guys are like, hey, like, this is not how the park project went down, like, we need to correct that, or whatever it is.
And it's strictly trees, right?
Yes, yes.
Not trumps or?
No, it would be like adding canopy or, I mean, I, I think I also included a link to the grant. Um, but that's like a whole like 14-page PDF, yeah. And then there's like a list in there of like all the tree-related activities that it could cover. So there are some that are like sort of tangential. So if you guys are like, oh man, we really need, um, I don't know, um.
You guys already did the orchard project? Have you participated in that?
You needed a like food orchard or something and you really wanted to add that, like, we could talk about that, but. Hopefully we don't wanna make too many changes at this point because we're getting really close to the deadline, so.
Proves a total difference.
Yeah.
The deadline's March 22nd.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we proceed with this, uh, grant application and in cooperation with, uh, Road and Light and, uh, and we kinda work together and move forward with.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, so that, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. Alright, back to the regular business. Just so everybody knows, we had computer problems today. So we're gonna work on, work a little different here. Okay, we need approval of the previous minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the January minutes.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're moving on citizens' report. Is there any citizen that wants to address this council at this time?
Yeah. First of all, I wanna apologize to the city of Bromley for the mess I've created down here. I've been cleaning it up, okay? Um, I had no idea. I had fines lettered against me. I don't get any paperwork across my house. The paperwork doesn't go to me.
Yeah, explain where, where, what, Jeff, I mean Jeff.
If my sister moved and when she moved, I guess the paperwork was going to her old house. I guess they were just throwing it away because all her mail goes to her house in Independence where she moved. That, that, that's what happened. That's when this all got lost. And it's just, you know, I mean, I've been cleaning the property up and I'm gonna continue to clean it up. I've talked to PDS about putting fences up and where I can put them, how high I can put them and all that. And a whole front of the house will be straight, cleaned up and straightened up. And it'll be stayed that way. There won't be any more problems.
Okay, does any council wanna address Jeff?
Well, you've been a problem for a long time. And our services don't come free. So I think we need to, if we're gonna do anything, we've worked with the rest of the citizens to come up with a, um, plan that where they at least pay something, um, to help the city recoup their fees that have been expended to, um, process the property.
Is there any way I can get the paperwork delivered to my house so that I don't have this problem anymore?
It, it, it's in your sister's name?
Yes.
And she lived, is, did she change the address on property to Independence with the PVA?
Her mailing address?
I think she, he said she gets it out there.
Yeah, she gets mail out, at her, at her house.
Well, she should be getting the letters from the, um, PVA, oh.
The last letter, the only letter I think she got is from the attorney.
So in.
I mean, I think probably what you wanna do is let me get even copy of the ordinance. I mean, you're asking the city to consider relieving some of the.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the city to send me the paperwork to my house. And, and if there's something that, that needs diligently taken care of, take care of it.
What about these existing lanes?
I had no idea they were here. I had no clue. And the paper, I don't know, nobody knows where the paperwork went. I, I can only assume that the residents, or the, the residents that bought her house when she moved to Independence were just throwing it away. Because that, was it ever being returned to the city? Or you?
It wouldn't come from the city, it would come from PDS.
Or, you know, I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I, I think the quickest and best way to address this, Jeff, let us look and find out exactly what is, what is owned, like can give you, get that thing. Jeff, you got an email address or?
I do.
Give, give me that. Now I'll mail this ordinance to you sometime, maybe a week and have, give you an idea what you need to come back.
Okay, sure.
Hey Jeff, Jeff, I'm pretty sure in the ordinance it requires a written statement from you, a written letter to us explaining, explaining everything.
Okay, I can do that.
And you're gonna, I'm pretty sure you're gonna need that for sure.
Okay, no problem. I can take care of that. You know, like I said, I've talked to PDS about this and we're, we're working to get this resolved. I, I don't wanna be a problem. I do not, not at all.
Write your email, phone number down on here for me. I'll send that to you and if you have any questions, bet you can call. I'll get that to you here next.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Take care of yourself. Okay.
It's got her mailing address, so she must want to be giving it to him.
Uh, I think there's a kind of a family feud going on there.
You think?
Yeah, when she moved out.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any other citizen wants to address the council at this time? Okay, PDS, Gail?
I don't have any, anything to report this moment.
Okay. Police chief?
Everybody have an opportunity to read my report?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
No. No, at this time, does any council member want to address?
I do. Did you get any calls on, again, on the homeless man behind Pleasant School down there at the end of Roman?
Are you talking on the river?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and they went down and they said he was packing up and leaving. The police told me that. Well, this is Prater and someone else went down there.
Well, he moved out to behind my house, between my house and Mike Palmer's house. And we kept watching for him. It was raining, so I assumed he was undercover somewhere. Once he showed up, I didn't get home in time and Mike Palmer saw him and told him, hey, you're trespassing on private property. He says, I'm sorry, I'm gone, I'm outta here, I'm leaving now. He packed up. Don't know where he went. It's possible he went on farther out into the county, so.
No.
But we're still watching.
He's not, he's down at the bridge and let alone now. Yeah, you know, well, you know, your officer arrested him two weeks ago down at my house and took him to jail.
Was that for the trespass?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they took him, but he was out like you say, eight hours, you know, they walked, let him walk, you know.
He's harassing a woman.
Yeah, and hit the bus stop, yeah, that was the main reason. He scared some little girl to death, yeah.
Well, he also asked a teenage girl for a ride to Riverside, which is.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Or did he do that at the bus stop or something?
No, down by the, down at the church.
Okay, alright. Well, we just gotta, everybody gotta keep an eye on them. If they see a problem, just call the police. That's what I did and they came down.
Called dispatch right away.
They called, they came down, arrested him without, no problem whatsoever, you know.
And then Jack and him went down there and said he was already packing up and heading down the road when he, they showed up.
Okay.
So I guess he moved from one place to another.
He's in Ludlow now, he's under the bridge.
He'll be in Kettering eventually.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Cody.
No worries.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yeah.
Do we need to come up with some type of ordinance so that he doesn't just squat on a corner with a, you know, need work or a sign like Walmart has on every one of their stop signs or?
I don't know if you can stop that.
I don't know that you can. I mean, I know there's some federal cases that say, you know, if you're not being disorderly or committing any sort of criminal offense.
Yeah, they're almost like at every exit all the time.
I know.
Everywhere, you know, everywhere you go.
I'd ask.
Yeah.
So, unless you have a direct ordinance that gives us authority to do something, we're just gonna move them on down the road as possible, if we're, if that's an option.
Right. Now, is it, that's different than a homeless than all of a sudden been building a tent up somewhere, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, so, that's a different situation.
Does that require an ordinance for something like that, you know? To protect the city, somebody just throwing a tent up down the park or something, you know?
If somebody does it down the park, I mean, it'd be up by, by dark.
That's true, yeah, okay.
I would think if you don't want anything like that, you need to have ordinances for this, whether it be thing.
Yeah.
That's right, that just makes our life easier. Cause then we can prefer to immediate, maybe.
So this is, this is not a sanctuary city, is it?
No.
Just talking about, I'm just sorry.
We don't have words for it.
We think someone has.
Soliciting, right?
Yeah. And so you don't have soliciting at all. They, they can't call the city. In Park Hills, they have to call PDS and get a permit through PDS to solicit. They don't even come through Park Hills, they go directly to PDS.
We've got an ordinance that covers.
But they have to get it from the city, so it may not be a bad idea to transfer it to PDS since we're part time.
Yeah.
Want me to take a look at it?
Yeah. Okay. Can the hall committee, Diane, you wanna, I'll chime in with you. After this council meeting session, we'll probably hold the council meetings downstairs for a couple months till we gut this room and take this wall out and increase the, the size of this. We're gonna redo it. The carpeting's horrible, it's tore up, it's reddened up, you know what I mean? Wanna paint it, take the ceiling down, put better lights. We have to replace the heating system, it's shot, you know what I mean? And I'm gonna try as much as I can do in-house with Jack and Bob. They're gonna be gutting and hauling all this stuff out of here, carpeting here. Diane, you're already looking at some new tables once we take this wall out, you know what I mean?
With, with audio, where they can build audio visuals into it.
That was gonna be a question.
Cause I would like to have a monitor like up on the wall. If somebody comes here as a guest, we'd be able to put it up on the monitor.
With a podium or some kind of.
Yeah, like electro.
Yeah.
That way it brings us up to date, you know what I mean? I don't know when this was done last, do you?
Jeez.
Huh?
Probably when they put the chief's office in. Because this was open years ago, totally open.
Yeah, I got the blueprints out cause I was going over some destructive things and everything like that. And it showed this being one large room.
Whenever the fire department decided to take the chief's office in there is when the last ring model.
Man, it's been there as long as I've.
They had the pews and the swing day for the judge and everything.
Exactly.
And that, that had to be, it has to be over 30 years or so.
I'm kinda going back to the seventies.
Yeah, I was gonna say early eighties.
Early eighties, the latest.
So be expected to have the meetings held downstairs till we get this, this project. At the bar? Huh? At the bar? We'll set tables up. I'll probably take these chairs down there, you know, you gotta make it comfortable, these chairs. We'll go down there, you know. Yeah, Bob?
What, what about any prior rentals that are already scheduled for downstairs?
Well, I mean, we can push our stuff off to the side, you know what I mean? We'll set it up before council, okay? We'll still leave that available. Okay, yeah. That should be no problem. Or, or we just got some chairs and tables to move, Bob, you know what I mean? It won't be a permanent thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. If we push everything back in the back, there's plenty of room for everybody, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Everything down there. So. Okay, Rhodes, Dave?
Rhodes, uh, there was one street light out. Keith made me aware of it. Work order that should be completed now, so that light bulb's been changed. Uh, they have three work orders to replace the remaining streetlights in the city. Um, I gave Jack, Jack was nice enough to come over to house. We had 10 five-gallon drums of asphalt pot hole patcher. And it's a synthetic material, uh, easy to tamp down and it's supposed to last five years.
Oh, wow.
It was just under a thousand dollars for eight containers and they gave us two, two of those free for starting us, their supplies. So, uh, Jack said he used it. He thought it was pretty easy to handle and, uh, able to use it. We'll see how it holds up. But other than that, uh, Jack did do some work on a catch basin down there that, um, the gentleman from Pike Street called about saying that it wasn't taking water. So, uh, I hope that that's been taken care of. Like Jack said, we'll find out in the next couple days. So, uh, that's all I got going on right now, if anybody has anything.
Was that stuff heavy? Very heavy. I'm just curious, you know, five-gallon buckets? Okay. I noticed something new that was a little bit lighter.
Did anybody address manual in their signs down there for no parking?
Uh, I, I, I did talk to them and they told me that they were gonna take them out. They were gonna, you know, use them during special events. So, I don't know why they're not out. I'll, I'll redress it.
Okay, I was just curious and.
They're not permanent, they're, they're, that's what they told me, you know.
They were supposed to be on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
So we don't have an ordinance to support it.
Now they can't park on the other side of the street, so they get four spots opposed to eight spots.
Yeah. What about the speed bump? Spring is here.
I was gonna bring that up. We're gonna, I was gonna look at that this Friday and get, get a couple out. I'll get with Jack and Bob if the weather prevails.
Right.
And, uh, did, did, Bob, did you come up with the streets that were most needed in them?
Uh, I think Roman Avenue was one.
Okay.
For sure.
I thought, I thought we was gonna do one there close to Ransome's driveway on Roman. And the other one over on Boone Street to keep them from, even though we got the flashing sign, I think.
Would it make more sense to put them closer to the stop sign, which makes them stop at the sign?
Or makes them accelerate slower through the intersection. It's kind of a catch 22. Or they're gonna go slower through the intersection, in the intersection.
Catch, I mean.
They like to fly and hit the brakes right there then, but, uh, yeah, either way, that's fine. But on Roman, you're, you're gonna miss that Shelby.
Maybe put two of them, put two down there in the middle where you're talking, what about a stop sign, you know what I mean? Just do two of them.
I mean, that would force them to stop because they're, they just fly through the stop sign.
We got enough to do that, you know what I mean?
And on Moore Street, only because of the, I don't, I'm okay on the corner where I'm at, but I know there's usually a lot of kids up at the other end. And I hate to see them flying with those kids. I mean, they go out on those little trikes and stuff. Somebody's gonna get.
We'll, we'll get them in here shortly. They'll be down, okay?
Are these, these are bolt-down units, right, that can be removed from?
Yeah, they can be removed.
They got the studs and, yeah.
Alright. Robert, Bob, you got anything?
Well, we've been working, doing some work down in Park. Uh, we, uh, sanded all the graffiti off the six picnic tables down there. And today we painted, well stained, three of them, uh, like a chocolate brown. We've got the other three to finish up. We're hoping to be able to do that tomorrow, because depends on the weather. We had a tenant come down, sent one of their texts down for a PM on a street sweeper. I mean, we keep it in really good shape, but there's a lot of things that, that need to be addressed by, by somebody who knows what they're doing, especially the hydraulics and pneumatics and, and everything else. But he was down there for a couple hours today and he's got it all ready to go. So when, um, turns the weather gets more in our favor, we'll be out putting the curbs and whatnot.
Okay.
That's about, that's about it. I mean, mostly, you know, we've been trying to, trying to do a lot of cleanup work, but, you know, with the weather the way it's been, uh, wet roads don't help at all. But once everything dries up, then we'll.
I will say, Bob, to, thanks to you and Jack, most of the streets along the curbs have looked probably really good, the way you've been keeping up with them, it's been making it look nice.
Thank you.
Is that it, Bob, yeah? That all?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Ways and Means?
Uh, the financial report's still looking pretty good, uh, the, um, actually, the expenditures are right on mark. Our revenues are kinda lagging a little behind, but that's probably due to the gross, gross receipts, that probably will, should get a decent check in April, um, from BP, hopefully. And then, I think the, uh, another one that was down a little bit, uh, still, still down a little bit, was the, uh, rental, property rental licenses, they're coming in fast and furious now, so, uh, that'll catch back up too. And that's about it.
What is that fifty thousand dollar intergovernmental fund, what is it, where it come from?
That came from SD One paying us back for the catch basin program.
Okay.
I thought everybody liked that number.
Okay, park and playground, I know Tim's not here, Tim's been through some, uh, surgery and he probably won't be able to be with us for a little while yet, right Diane?
Right, um, he won't be at April's for sure, um, he's having his second surgery on April the first, and if luck has it, he'll be, hopefully, be able to be here but for May, but that's if he on rehab and stuff, so, but he is, um, he is doing some sign language and, uh, working with me, through me with Tony Butler to face that wall around the little wall. So, that's one of the things he's trying to get finished before he goes in on April.
Yeah, good, good. Okay, insurance and grants?
Uh, I am in the middle of our policy renewal right now, they just released it at the end of February. It should all be done online this year.
Yeah.
Uh, which should make it a lot more efficient. We did it late last year, um, 'cause my predecessors, uh, you know, didn't, didn't have any of it done, but, um, the playground and a lot of new equipment has already been included in, in the policy from last year, so it really should be, hopefully I'll be able to report that that's complete at the next meeting. Nothing on grants, uh, I, I wanna thank Gil for, um, reaching out to the urban and community forestry for this, um, that was one of the better ones that was sort of on my radar, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see if we get on this, the insurance, if it changes, 'cause I don't know, many of y'all know, they're raised automobile and home insurance across the board, mine about twenty-five friggin' percent, you know, I was shocked, you know?
I've got a question for you.
Yes.
Does, does, do you know if the policy has included the camera system? Do you know if that is in there?
No, but I can check.
Yeah. I just wanna double check.
I think that was in place.
Yeah, I think I gave them that, but.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll double check.
Okay.
There is one thing on that forestry grant, um, we can, Terry will be involved to the extent that she will, uh, submit any receipts or whatever. Apparently, we can recoup some of that money through the grant, 'cause she says, does the city need support to make it happen, do we need it to account for stamp time? Do you think we need to put anything in there to reimburse her for her time, or just consider it part of her daily?
Oh, for Terry's time?
Yeah.
That's up to her.
I mean.
How, how much does she have any idea?
Well, well, it's just taking the receipts and submitting them to the state and waiting for reimbursement, basically.
And you think it would be a lot, I mean, is it?
When I did it for the, what was that we did, I had, uh?
Main Street, Main Street.
Yeah, Main Street, it wasn't that big of a deal, you just scanned the invoices, emailed them to them, and then, in a couple of weeks, you got the check.
I, I think she can do it at this time, but if it gets to be more, I'll have to adjust it, you know what I mean?
Okay, well, we have to account for it in the grant, if we wish to reimburse her for her time. Doesn't hurt to just.
Why, Gil, why don't we go ahead and put it in there, do they want a dollar amount, Gil, or what?
Um, it can't exceed twenty percent of the total grant amount.
Okay.
And right now, she's, uh, asking for forty-six thousand, so that can't exceed, what, ninety-two hundred?
Yeah, let, let, let's do that, okay.
You want me to put ninety-two hundred in there?
Yeah.
But that would have to actually be allocated to her, I mean.
Right.
But if we don't use it, it doesn't, it just goes back, we don't get it back from the state, right? Cause we're not asking for it, cause we submit, right, to be reimbursed.
Well, I mean, if we don't think, can we do another percentage?
Yeah, we can do, like, we can.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'd do that highway.
You could do maybe two, two thousand dollars.
There you go, there you go, yeah.
Okay, I'll put, I'll have to put two thousand in there for the budget.
That'd be fine. Kim, I skipped you, you know?
That's all right, keep going.
Go ahead, Dan.
I don't have a whole lot anyway, man. I've been working on this sidewalk cost share, and, um, there, there's a lot of information, I have a lot of different ways to do it, but I was talking to Mike yesterday, and I think I got a pretty good idea of how to try to put this together. I'll try to get it done before the next meeting and send it to everybody. I'm thinking, you probably won't wanna start till July first, so that gives us a couple of months yet to get this thing finalized, so I'll get that to you. I got this City of Brownlee Statement of Financial Disclosure, I think everybody needs to get one of those back to, um, the Joint Ethics Board. So, if anybody didn't get one, let me know, and I can get one to you.
I think we all got them by email.
Yeah, that's how I got mine.
Yeah, but I'll have to look.
If you don't get one, let me know, I can give one to you, but, yeah, I think those have to be in by April the nineteenth, and I guess you can just email those back to them, probably oughta do that. We, I filed that motion to get the judgment on it, there's lots at the city park that the city never, did get titled to, and Judge wanted us to, wanted the master commissioner to take a look at this, so we had a hearing late last month, I guess, and Mike came down and Janet Gardner came down, and I had them both testify about what's been going on down there, and, and the master submitted a recommendation to the court that the judge go ahead and sign that order conveying those, those lots to the city. Once we get that done, we can get that seventy-five thousand dollars again, so that's moving along. I got a couple of checks here on a couple of liens, there's one at, um, at seven Boone Street for sixty-eight hundred dollars, that's, uh, that's for a CDB lien, and then there's another check here I've got for the old liquid tax bill at, um, seventeen thirty-four High Water, that's the one that burnt down, yeah, this is a old tax book for that, but I've got that here, that's twelve hundred dollars, and I've got a statement here for those two. Let's see. Oh, I, I checked with PDS, I, I haven't done anything as far as that lot up there on Moore Street that you all closed. Normally, when you, when you divide a lot, you have to go through PDS, and they have to do an approval and stamp it on a plaque and all that business, I didn't know, because the city was involved, and we had, we looked through all this. Uh, so I checked with Rob, and he's gonna check with PDS's attorney to see if we have to go through all that or not, so, as soon as I find that out, I'll tell you those things together.
I got the wall, it's three oh five main.
Oh, I talked to Mike Monday, I guess, and he's still working on trying to get his funding together for that, I think he's got till first part of April, so.
I think that's why he's trying to get the other two houses on Boone Street.
Yeah, I think he sold, he could've sold one of them, I think.
What about the concrete on, on Moore Street that Rogers didn't pay for? When there's some issue with the wall up there?
I think that was resolved.
I think that was between the contractor and the city.
It doesn't, doesn't involve the city in any way, shape, they can't put a mechanic, mechanic's lien or anything in it?
He waited too long to do anything with it. I mean, that's been over for several months as well.
Okay, that's all. Okay, need a motion to approve all committee reports?
I'll make a motion to approve the committee report.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Old business, anybody got any old business?
I was wondering with the food pantry.
Um, it looks really cool, uh, I stopped by, uh, Stidell, I guess is how you say it, I'm still working on that. And his guy's got the pantry pretty much together, um, and they're working on the library now, um, it's gonna be powder coated, um, and, uh, taught.
Is that the picture you sent out?
Yeah, that's the pictures I sent you.
I didn't know what the hell. When I got that, I'm like, somebody sent me the wrong picture or something, I don't, I didn't even know what it was, like, you know, it was in two different sections and everything like that.
Yeah.
I didn't know what color, I'm going, they didn't say food pantry, they, uh, didn't say anything on there, I was like, pardon?
Yeah, mystery, I just thought you put it together, but, uh, yeah, so the, the library box, not a box, it's like a circle. And then, um, there's gonna be lexan on the, on the, in the door, so you can kinda see through, and then they're gonna use, like, the acorn finishing nuts around to hold the lexan on, and they're gonna do that with the pantry as well, so have a little bit of, you know?
See into it.
A little bit of see-through, a little bit of pizzazz, and then, we gotta figure out, um, colors, and I'm thinking probably like a cream white or something, that's not gonna show dirt, but it's not gonna collect a lot of heat in the sun.
Reflect the sun, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, on the pantry, on the lexan portion of the door, he's gonna cut out some metal letters to say pantry, and those are gonna be epoxy to the plexi coming down the front, so it's almost called like floating, uh, letters. But I think we're really getting our money's worth out of this project, he's going above and beyond to, to make this special, and, um, I'll be, I'll be glad to see it finished. Now, uh, there's gonna be bolt holes in the bottom of both of these things, uh, I think four bolts, so, at some point, we're gonna have to get a post set out there, uh, and those things will just bolt right on the posts wherever we set them, so.
Got a question, yeah, our current plan is to put them at the corner where the Olden Borough was, right?
That's the current plan.
I've, I've had some people just kinda recommend not having a camera on there, it's gonna be, it, it, you know, may not be a good spot, but I'm, I'm good with.
I was actually gonna bring that up for discussion, because, uh, I was talking to, uh, the gentleman over there, Stidell, Mike, uh, he said, these things are gonna work awfully nice. He's like, are you sure you don't wanna put these in the park? And I said, um, you know, something that we can discuss, so.
What about on Stidell's property, right across from the park, since he made it, he's got that, that corner lot right there?
It's so beautiful down there.
Oh, out by the, out by the bar, out on that corner, across from Keyhole, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, all this way towards the ballpark.
Across from the ballpark, do, do they have cameras on the, on Steve?
Where his RVs parked there on the, on Steve Tan?
Yeah, we got one around RV, that would be good.
Do they have cameras on the building down there at, um?
I can go and ask.
It was only suggested that, um, by, it was Les Kidwell, he said, uh, this one city put stuff out like that, and people were stealing stuff out of there right and left. They had no cameras, so, it, I, I don't care where it goes, to be honest with you, I mean, to make that corner look good, and to make that corner look good.
Yeah, and that's kinda the way I'm looking at it too, because you've got that multi-unit living there, and it's kinda, I don't wanna say gliding, but that area could maybe use a little.
Yeah, it'll, it'll pop out.
I'll go, I'll go talk to them to see if they got cameras.
I'm gonna be stealing out of it when it's there for them to take it free.
Yeah, the food's free, and, uh.
That's just, when I, it left as fast as it got, went in there, and the library, they were taking the books, keeping them?
Well, that's the point, you, you take a book and you return it?
You mean they're taking it maliciously?
So, you, they're not returning it.
If they're not gonna return it, they're not gonna return it.
Let, let me, let me, let me check, Andy, cause, you know, like, I, I think I could kinda keep a good eye on it.
Yeah, you're not far.
Yeah, and, I'm always sitting there looking out that window, I'm looking right down there, so I think that I could, you know?
I could've just put a Ring camera out there for them.
I mean, we see catalogs pulling up to it, taking everything out of there, it's a little bashing, buddy.
I just don't wanna see a grill put there right next to them, cooking the food there.
The, uh, the doors on both are gonna be spring-loaded, the hinges and stuff, so they're gonna, they should soft-close on their end.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, let's see it, and I'll check into that. I'll get back, by that time, we should be ready, you know what I mean, hopefully.
Yeah.
They'll put it out there. Anybody else got any old business?
Uh, yeah, um, real quick, uh, conduit's been installed at the, from the building over to the pavilion, so the pavilion's gonna have lighting in it here soon. And the camera, also, the camera, um, that'll hold, uh, the post for the camera has been installed, that is right on.
Right in there.
Right, it, well, it gets, it gets you right there, real close, so, maybe we can catch these little, little guys, the ones with graffiti.
Say, are the cameras activated yet, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did we see anything on them with the graffiti?
No, no, that's why, kinda why we decided to put one over there closer. Originally, we were gonna put two in there, and that was overkill, but, uh, we've got two left, one is a spare, and then this one is gonna be mounted here soon.
So, it was all part of the original camera system that you purchased?
Yeah, 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 we're gonna keep one spare just in case one goes out and swap them out.
Okay, new business, have I got new business?
I had a couple of questions, um, who's maintaining five and nine Main Street, the vacant lot there? Are we, the city involved, and Jack maintaining that?
The Jack, they've been, they've been cutting it.
Okay.
The one I said, Tim's?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we know that, like.
And the artist, when he gets done with the other building, which he's hoping to start soon, um, he'd like to have an unveiling party, where we get the community together.
I'm prepared, have him set it up, you know, if everyone wants to show up, can show up, you know what I mean, that's what the park's for, you know what I mean?
Right.
Let him, Lord welcome, let him do that, you know?
And you could let me know when it's done and how he wants to do that, and I can make a post and everything, just to get it out there, yeah.
I think he'd like to have the city involved in it.
I'm fine, I'll, I'll be there, you know? Yeah, Bob?
Going back to this grant, or the issue for the tree grant.
Yeah.
Where exactly, does anybody have any idea where exactly I was planning on putting these trees?
Now, the study will be done, will be, come back recommended to us, Bob, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
No.
Because.
No?
No.
Well, we gotta pick the spots?
Well, right now, all we're getting money for is for her to, for, to do a inventory of what trees exist.
Yes, okay.
Um, now that we had the discussion about possibly putting in, like Dave said, we're gonna add that, so then, I guess, the city would pick, maybe wherever we're doing sidewalks, that's where we put a tree at this point in time.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking that question is, just my opinion, we have more trees than we need in this town. They're all, all they're doing is dropping filth all over the place, it's constantly cleaning up, they're running down into the storm drains. And honestly, I mean, just my opinion, I, I, I don't think we need another tree in this town, in fact, I could tell you about a dozen of them. I'd be more than happy if they get hit by lightning and burned to the, to the ground.
Bob, you're missing a, a lot on this tree study, these trees are particular trees.
Right.
They don't have big leaves, they're, if you ever go to big towns where they got them, they got real little petals, they're nice trees, they don't have these big leaves of these big trees they got.
Well, she didn't explain that, you know, I, I'm just assuming.
I know, but I, I know, cause I've seen them, and they only grow about ten feet tall. You know what I mean, they don't grow like these thirty and forty footers that we got around here, that's the last thing we want, you know? So, these, these trees, when you see them, they're pretty, they are, and they, they don't cause a lot of mess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they, um, like I say, you know, we're, we're surrounded by greenery.
Yeah.
With the exception of on the north, north side of town, and we've got, we've got plenty of trees along the river back there. We've got enough oxygen in this town to, to take care of the next twelve generations and something.
Well, so the, the study will be interesting once she gets completed then, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I got one thing on a new business, next Friday, I'm meeting Duke Energy down here at this building, uh, they're gonna look at all of our lights, electrical usage, and they have money, grants for city, they'll come in here and change every light, and I'm trying to incorporate it into this, this makeover, even outside there, in the basement, and the, all the HBA systems, we might be able to grant the whole set of cost up, but we have to put a certain efficiency, you know, in there. So, I'm gonna meet with them Friday here, and hopefully see what details for us, if we can get a grant to cut the cost in half, that would be fantastic, you know?
And you, I know at one time, we talked about taking out that three-phase electric to go to the asylum?
That's gonna be part of the discussion.
Is it?
Okay, yes, for cost-cutting measures.
Right, right, right.
So, I've been talking about this for a while, and finally, they agreed to come and have a sit-down meeting at the city, they wanna walk through the city, the building, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
They're bringing a couple of people with them, and hopefully, we can work something out and cut our costs, you know?
I got one more question for you, Mike, did you ever get any responses on this thing with? I got one more question for you, Mike. Did you ever get any responses on this thing with the alley up there with Roan, by next to our house up there?
The letters, the letters, it went out?
No, no.
You haven't gotten anything back yet?
No.
Nothing's been done?
Yeah, no, uh-uh, no.
You want an answer from the neighbors, from who it would affect?
Yeah. Mike sent the letters out, you know?
Yeah. Did you get yours, huh?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can ask all of them if you want.
Yeah, you know.
You didn't have to. That's your responsibility to take care of it.
Then you're not doing it.
Well, then that's, that's tough luck.
Okay.
It'd just be easier if everybody had that written consent. They'd save money to do it that way, so they can do it.
You're talking about surrendering that alley?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, communications, anything? No? Motion to approve the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?